Let the people signify from the United States of America and see the Republic of Canada. One nation under one government indivisible, the river of media.
Thank you very much. This is the Ranchester Regent's Council meeting March twenty first, twenty twenty three in New York. On the current agenda. We have changed then.
Move to approve as published.
Okay. Move by the office. The agenda as published. No comments, all papers?
Hi.
Um, approval of minutes for March seventh, twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Yes, again. Proceed. Seconded, um, any more discussion? Home paper?
Hi.
There is public comments. You by. Sir.
Uh, Levi says fine.
We're here now for a long time.
Yeah, thank you for I just wanted to give you a quick brief update. We'll take much your time about uh. We just finished our annual report, our year review of twenty twenty two and wanted to give you just a brief update of what the Sheriff County Sheriff's Office did here in Manchester over twenty twenty two. So uh, the calls for service that uh, the Sharon County Sheriff's Office responded to in in the town of Manchester was a hundred and sixty calls. Um, that accounts for uh, right at six point six percent of our call volume. Um, and in twenty twenty one, our calls for service were two hundred and forty five calls. So um, that was accounted for nine point six percent of our call volume a year ago. And I think uh, when you're looking at that, a lot of that has to do with with Marshall Kuchka and and what we're seeing. We're seeing that the call volume of, you know, I think uh, Marshall Kuchka has done a great job and and you all is educating uh, the community on on, you know, the rules and and what that. And so I think that's really helped some of our calls and we're not getting called to those, you know, town ordinance type calls that have been. And going in through the the Marshall Kucha. So um, that's kind of been, you know, that's where we're seeing that that drop within um, the calls for service. I mean, twenty twenty two, we uh, provided eight hundred and nine close patrols of Manchester. And so uh, what close patrols mean or this is not our deputies just driving through Manchester. This is uh, they take the uh, time to be intentional and and truly close patrolling Manchester. So they're taking, you know, uh. A time and and not just driving through, but they're spending, you know, time in the in the Manchester area. So that was eight hundred and nine um, close patrols within Manchester. Uh, that accounts for about twenty six point seven percent of our close patrols throughout the county. Um, so um, you know, in in twenty twenty one, we provided eight hundred and seventy four close controls in Manchester. So slightly a little less than than um, what was last year. But you know, still looking at that, that that twenty six point seven percent of our close patrols are here in Manchester, which I think is a great, great number as well. So um, if you have any questions, I'd be be more than happy to answer any.
Will you be patrolling last, much last number?
No, I I mean, our goal is to continue to keep that those numbers, you know, I don't I and and the discussions that we've had with with all of you and and Mayor Clark and and Marshall Kuchka is is we don't plan to change how we uh, patrol and provide law enforcement services uh, to the town of Manchester. So that's not going to change. Um, you know, the the fluctuation, which I don't think is is huge between the eight hundred and nine, eight hundred and seventy four within a year. But we want to keep that to remain is what we can in our, like I said, our 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 services that we provide to the town of Manchester. We want to continue those. The only difference is is now that I think our call volume is going to decrease a little bit with the the types of calls that we get funneled through the sheriff's office that we no longer handle. Um, which are those kind of town ordinance type type of calls.
When you uh, do your close patrols, do you have a video? That is running continually when you drive into town?
No, not necessarily. So you know, our deputies will activate their in car camera system or their body cameras if if something, you know, piqued their interest or things like that. But typically they're not running their camera system, you know, the whole time they're doing close patrols. Our in car camera system is in and our body camera system is is um, quite remarkable in the technology and the advances it has though. We can do what's called record after the fact, almost up to like seven days. So if something happens and and we use this recently on the on the vehicle for the ways that we had throughout Sharon County. When we started getting more information in a suspect vehicle and things and where these were occurring. We went back to where our close patrols, whatever our deputies looked at and we started recording after the fact. And we started saying something, you know, very, we we saw something that was very consistent in in a vehicle that was matching those descriptions in the areas. And so we were able to to identify a suspect by using that technology. So while we're not recording that, you know, while we're there, we can go back and record after the fact if something we need to look up. So I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad it's working for you because that's kind of already what we planned originally, so. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Rick, did you have something you you have some short statement on?
Yeah, yes. It went to me the other night and I was pretty disappointed on the way it was presented is very biased. But the trail project until we can fix things right here in the town, it needs to be taken care of. Should be taken care of before instead of that kind of running. I have pictures here. You can look at them, our trail right in town to our feet. The bridges falling apart, it doesn't comply with the people's uh. So the people could not access it with wheelchairs. Or it's just, it's a mess. And this guy see kids try to walk, there isn't a lot of walk on it anymore. It's that unsafe. It's just a matter of time, something's going to happen and I don't want that to happen to anybody. And uh, there's you know, a lot of things around town to be fixed fixed first and I don't think people should have to complain before they jump on it. You know, looking for Randy's house was a mess. The ice was so deep, cars been you can tell they're running out of water, but his lawn on his fence. You know, stuff like that, you people invited around the council, the crew, can can they see something that's yeah, we got to get on this instead of wait till completely start complaining? That's that's a big one. And then another thing I talked to Randy, the thing about the trees, I called you about it. And nothing happened. You can't take your camper down the streets. Either Barbie's truck went through here this last fall, knocked off one of the lenses. Uh, if you go down past Shane's there, you can see the broken branches were were did damage to my camper. You know, it's it's uh, all these little things that, well, why can't they be taken care of without people have to really get on it? You know, it shouldn't have to be that way. I talked to you, did you did you guys ever hear about it? Probably not. You know, that if you don't communicate with the council, it ain't gonna, you know. It's not, you know, it's not your fault, it's the mayor's fault. He should be communicating with you.
Sir, is tree trimming the responsibility of a property owner?
Right, who enforces it? One tree that damaged my camper is on the town property actually.
Is it?
I'm I have looked, I am not being able to downsize my tree. Go around by Shane's going down the runway between the local road, state statutes is uh, it's right there. You can see the broken branch.
I got a picture by the. Uh, Mr. Brown, do you want to, I'm kind of visiting during office hours, you will go over it. Please.
Well, I don't think the public needs to know too, don't you?
They they will, but a lot of these are administrative things and uh, a lot of them have to with Mr. With uh, Marshall Kuchka now. It's easier for us to enforce some of some of the things we've planned for us.
Yeah, most towns have a tree ordinance or a few people, you know. Then you go down the part of that, you'll keep that all cleaned up for the campers. You know, I seen him down there. He's you know, he did a wonderful job of tree trimming.
In the state park.
Yeah, the state park, yes, but what about those people that live here?
We, the state's trees and we ask us. But what's also Mr. Brown, yes, I am, I you're recognized with your complaints. Uh, it's been a challenging year for us with uh, snow and ice also. And we do have a long list, the the we have a budget that's built on different parks and so the parks and is under one budget. The streets are under another budget, so those are things will be addressed each year. And you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough year for for water repairs and puddles.
Totally.
Yeah, and there's I had to chop out ice in front of my house to keep it green open. Because it's been such a.
Town crews should uh, be spread out within five days instead of four so they can get a little more done. You know, that would really help and get a new garbage truck and one person would have a ability to.
Um, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, uh, yes, and if you'd like to, I'm always open to come in, bring your, bring your uh, your stuff with you. And I'll report back to the, report back to the council. We we can't make any decision that this is this is just public comment. If we want to, if we want to put on the budget or on the on the agenda, we need to.
Okay, thank you much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I appreciate you taking a look at the pictures and something. I could, you know, I could have hurt yesterday.
Right, yeah, that's right, and we've had issues with that bridge. We have a number of.
Yeah, and it needs to be looked at quite often actually because it's just the nature of where it's at.
Yeah, and yeah.
All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, anything else? Um. Uh, old business, we don't have any new business. So there's one thing that I, it's like, um, maybe it's old business, probably. Oh, okay. Um, our emergency response plan. Um, I I kind of talked to Barb about some of that stuff. And I know that I think Spencer's been working on it. Um. Given the the fact that we, well, it's not the fact, yeah. But supposition, I guess, of nature. The tap or whatever the case may be. Is is there um, some way that? Actually, we can prepare the, you know, like residents? To uh, reveal the children plays? You know, something like that, or to maybe make suggestions on how to do that? If you know, Randy, we uh, in. I mean, I I think my main concern is like the railroad going through town. Yeah, I mean, and that, I mean, the first time I went to the 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 houses planning thing, it wasn't even on there. So they added that, but it's a long process and I think that the new new management office who were working on stuff like that. I'm from the age where we didn't, we didn't have shooter active shooter drills. We had uh, nuclear attack tech drills, so it's in the home or put you in the basement, so. I mean, I mean, I, but I I understand what you're saying, that we're, it's it's a long process and I think that the new management office. I actually went to a tabletop um, exercise, I think about a year ago, nine months ago. Uh, with specific plans and we all sat around and did this, which is the first time we've done that for the uh, emergency management office. So I think, yeah, I think you're right. How are you notify that? Yeah, you know. Yeah, I am, I understood, you know, about the railroad because uh, when I was on fire department, we talked about that a lot. Because uh, I don't even think there's a speed limit, because they're going six miles.
Six miles an hour.
Yeah, for here it is. And you know, and we always look at it and we say, you know, I said, it's on a curve for trying to, maybe they can go six, they can go six miles an hour if you're down. But it's on the edge of town, this is not true town. Right, and we we did, uh, we've talked about that a lot. You know, on the fire department. Yeah, and if we're gonna handle that, you know, what's what's gonna be the evacuation radius, it depends on what kind of products spilled. I mean, that's. Yeah, Randy, it is, it is on our radar to try to ground, to notify people and. You know, it's it's gonna be a challenge. Well, I think Spencer's been working on that. Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's 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 on the radar, it's it's, you know, you know, when you have a town, maybe you have a small staff, it's hard to. Hard to have one person dedicated to that.
Oh, yeah.
So I, yeah, it's a, it's a process for long term. And then I know that uh, Jeff had a very good um, definition of federal tax dollars. When we went to the uh, um, pathway uh, meeting. And I think that that could be actually published about where those tax dollars come from and how they're obtained. I think that maybe some people might understand just a little bit more about, you know, how that's being funded. And um, and I think that the the guy from Cheyenne, the, oh, he was in Cheyenne for quite some time. I don't know how many years, twenty years? He had a really good definition of how those tax dollars regenerate. Uh, what did he call it, force multiplier, I think is what he called it. But I I think if if since Jeff Jeff is so eloquent in his speech. I think he could, you know, kind of do a redefinition of that, you know, in regards to the pathway. Like it might help people understand where those tax dollars are coming from.
In the capacity of WWE's engineering uh, council.
Yeah, yeah. And I also understand that uh. Two million dollars was acquired for the date before. Um, published in the press, it's only two point three or two points, I don't know exactly, it's something like that. It's in, it's in the business council, let's put it that way, it's in the business council coffers. Will those tax paying dollars, I don't know, so you have to ask me, I haven't why. I, that's that's, I'm not in on the, I'm not in on the inside of that one, so I don't know, I just know it's in the, it's in the business council's coffers and I don't, it's. I don't know, it's called the community facilities funding or something like that. But I don't want to run that. It's not my.
Thank you, sir.
My pool. Okay, so, hey, yeah, thank you. Um, okay, new business, the event floors. Okay, so we've been using the community room, this is really becoming an event room. So we're trying to polish it up and make it look better and run it out. So we're getting uh, weddings, new girls, proms. Um, Christmas parties, Easter parties, church services, you know, just to tidy it up. So we repainted it, redoing lighting in there, uh, pretty more ambient lighting in there. Um, so we want to refinish the floor because it's got the old pickleball court. It's it looks, it's not attractive, it looks like a, it looks like an industrial warehouse. So we're trying to make this more of a, an event space. And we had a couple, we had a guy come out and look at it and we can do a. It would remove the old coating and repair the cracks and joints and and uh, then put on epoxy for a lifetime guarantee, I think is what it was. And it's one color, I mean, there's other things we can make relative down, so but I think that large space, very large space, it's uh, almost five thousand square feet. Um, for nineteen seventy six.
And our crew did look at doing it themselves, that was the initial plan, but there's, none of the equipment is available to rent anywhere in the area. It requires um, removing everything, diamond tips and all kinds of stuff. And this crew can come in and get it done in a couple of days. And be done and lifetime guarantee it. And the paint alone was over four thousand and that was not including the epoxy when we looked at doing it.
That's probably a good deal.
Yeah, and then like I say, we we're trying to do this spacing as something else from what it is right now and make it more attractive for for events and stuff and weddings. You know, because you have, you have a park in the back and you kind of access to other things that, yeah, you know, we're getting more and more requests for. To bring us a good space, that we're also, yeah, adjusting the prices on it and stuff like that, just to make it more like, you know, recapture on, so just, so. Um, if you're. The mayor of it, a question on that, does that include a forge cracker?
We got it.
Tori O'Neil.
What kind?
Two quotes.
Yeah, the 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 one, the the thirty nine is, that's a really deluxe coat with.
Fancy, fancy metallic, be this one, like one solid color.
Okay.
With a.
That's the difference. This one is not a problem.
No, but I wanted to show you that that is, is the only, is the only game in the whole area that would even do this or give a quote. So I just want to show you two quotes and that's the difference.
If you if you want to see example of 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 the high end one, we call the colors, it's a Kelly's. Um, version.
Not anymore.
No, you changed it to one coat because it was too high maintenance, so they just re-coated it.
And go back to one card because it. It's not actually, it's not as pedal. There's too much maintenance for it, I just had to pick it up, so.
Well, will I, if I'm not wrong about this, they do have different colors of epoxy?
Yeah. Yeah, you can make it one solid color, but they, I think in there it was like a.
It was a round.
Like a.
Round.
Yeah, yeah, it was like really neat looking finish on there, but they're talking about here, it's just this great, whatever color you pick. You have the, they put down the epoxy paint and they put some other coating over the top of that. So that was my understanding of how that guy kind of explained it. They gotta go through it, route all of the joints out and all the cracks and then they're putting some kind of a. I'm not exactly sure what he puts in there and then they have to diamond grind everything, the whole entire floor.
What's the maintenance on this after they?
We just.
He just keep it clean.
Which we have the.
Yeah, yeah, the the coat that he puts on the top, he said is a lifetime guarantee, no, I don't. Know exactly what that means.
It was lifetime?
As long as.
I mean, she could be. Change my company next year, I don't know, I mean, I I'm not sure what that means, but he sounded pretty confident in that. Whatever that copier material he puts over the epoxy paint that is supposed to wear very well.
He did tell me he'd been doing for fifteen years, he'd never gone back to re-resurface something.
So, yeah, yeah, he did say that, so he's never had to go back to the job and.
Obviously, I think say that investment is something that we charge rental fees for, so at the end of the day. Better place to create more use and something that our town can use, like be in favor.
Okay.
Do you want to have a hold on?
Yeah, I'm glad you're.
I would move. To authorize the mayor for nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for recoding, removing and recoding. Four thousand nine hundred and forty square feet of floor.
One second. Would you have, Jessica, any more discussion? Any more discussion? And one all paper, my, I. There is, um, okay. Uh, the other, one big ticket adding we have here is uh, our garbage truck and um. We have the opportunity right now to. Uh, basically. Reserve garbage truck that we will pay for in next year, not this, this facility. So we need to make a plan, so we need to act on this now because there's six available, we could get them as soon as, get one uh, late August or in September. And it'll be a single man garbage truck, you know, that. So that'll, it cuts down on wages and activities and, yeah, I mean, accidents and and stuff like that, so. Um, if. Um, yes, the bid price is, I guess we call it, the price is four hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. If we go ahead and authorize, go ahead and work with that on order, um. We can, we don't pay for the first year after the new state. As we can see.
A release first.
How long is that? Whenever we take the question of it, one year from that date.
Hmm, you know.
But we would probably, I mean, we would work in a budget, but I, we'd probably pay it in one or two payment. To avoid any interest, but because we have no debt at all, so we don't have anything. But we could theoretically, if we wanted to, it's an option to pay it in a couple of payments or five payments. But I think we can work it into the budget where we don't have to accumulate interest.
And no payoff penalties.
Right, no, yeah.
And and the way the interest rates are going up just between the two different bits, we got one without the automated. We have all the sample percentage, um, take the big ticket on, I think, yeah, very quickly, so.
Remind, this works with our colors, correct? Our existing colors?
Yes.
I think with most of them, there's a.
Well, someone, I don't know, it's only a lot, uh, like a latchet ready. So when you go to pick that up with that arm and that's actually working in the house, that's fine, you might have to bang her around a little bit, but.
Yeah, there's some, there's some of the the older ones, like the one I have. Um, it's, it has a latch even on, so you probably, I'd have to replace it. Mine, but.
Got the latch off.
For that.
I mean, I'm not sure, yeah, I think in general, I've go work with the the tortoise.
I mean, you'll be able to pick up every tortoise, but some might just be. Oh, yeah, I don't know, how many, how many, how many times we have to work, but I.
Contract purchase.
Right.
Right, in order to do a purchase.
We're not spending the dollar.
No.
It's a purchase order.
We'll be reserving it on our budget.
Yes.
I would move to authorize the mayor to contract for purchase one garbage truck.
Does it, is it a second? Oh, okay, crazy second, move second, any more discussion? More discussion?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, it's gonna alleviate two employees, right, there's three on the truck now, so two can go and countries.
Will is not very happy about that.
About nothing.
We will, we will still, I mean, we still retain our other garbage truck because this one is incapable of picking up the dumpster dumps. So we have, we don't have that many dumpsters, we can, we'll just maintain no one, pick up the dump, like commercial dumpsters, we just don't have them. So there's some hope for Will.
Of course, yeah.
Is it, is it, is it big enough, I don't want Sharon, at my son's house, they have those big three hundred gallon ones, they just reach out and pick it up them too.
Yeah.
Yes.
It picks up.
Probably get rid of a whole bunch of the little metal ones. It'd be worth the time to do that, too.
Well, we'll see, well, yeah, that's, the city's sharing homes up there, we, and individuals owners here.
Right.
That's a different, that's a different setup, so we would have to look at it, we would have, probably would work for us in the sense that. You'd have to have cooperative, I mean, those three hundred gallon ones are used for a number of other people.
Yeah, there's like six people on one.
Right, and that, so, but that's, there's a, that setup is different than ours as far as ownership of the of the dumpsters, so. That might be something long term, but at this point, it's something.
Something considerate.
Yeah, um, you know, it might be that to replace the. The the dumpsters that we use now, the larger three gallon containers.
Like the school.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, we we haven't gotten to that, but we're just trying to get, we need a new garbage truck.
Yeah, this will work out.
Yeah, it's getting to the point where it's, it's getting, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um. Does it move seven, go over there?
Bye.
Bye. Okay, carries, okay, thank you very much. Um. I don't probably have a whole lot on the mayor's report we have, other than. Uh, we do have a sanddaging station back there behind the town hall for runoff, snow and otherwise. Be be sure to, um, I just asked everybody to use it for the sanddaging purposes that's there, or because they get it from the county. Don't use it for your, your cat's little box, can, your kids, sandbars. Try and try and keep that down a little bit.
You have bags as well.
There are bags back there, um, they're in a box right now, try to keep them out of the weather because they deteriorate if they're exposed to like the elements, um. And we can get more, I don't know how many we have on hand yet. You know, we have it now for right now, it's hard to say with with the snow runoff, it's if it's a little bit different than the stream runoff, it's a little harder to predict, so. But it's back there. And we have, uh, we're working on the fourth of July and we have fireworks. Um, we did about ten thousand dollars worth fireworks last year of the. School desert campus there. Um, we're still, we're looking at placing orders for about that much this year. I'm I'm working on that, filling it with sponsorships. So, um, if that's all right with you, just move forward with that. We need to get this order now, the fourth of July, um, just in which you need to work out. Um, that's all I have, um. Engineers report, no?
Mayor, council. Uh, office report here, there's nothing anything different from when the last time I was here. So if you would, I guess I could go through this, local stuff hasn't started yet, um, hundred percent design, uh, TR pathway, we should be hitting that pretty, pretty quick here. I know we've got the mechanics in in, get comments back on that, working on that uh, with right on, so, um. Uh, TR pathway, the construction, the statement of intent. Uh, that will be submitted here, I have submitted on there, I'm gonna go through it, have to remove a few things on that, so when I get that done, I'll get that. And, uh, talk with Jao today, I'm mobile in water study, they're working on, I think they're gonna be working on getting the contract put together. Um, to try to get that moving forward. Uh, the grants laws down there, I have not heard anything on the art funding with the replacing the water main. Um, probably given this week and then start making phone calls and kind of see what would be the next step or if there's something.
Um, probably give them this week and then start making phone calls and try to see what would be the next step or if there's something that we need to do. Um, I don't think there is, but that doesn't mean that that's the case. Uh. Subdivision down there, um, northern underground's been working out, but, um, underground facilities out there, I think they drove out there and looked, I did talk to them about. Getting something in place to try to keep the mud down. I mean, it's gonna. It's not real bad yet, but it's going to be, so. Um, I actually had a meeting with them on Thursday to. Get something in place. I think there's so much, I haven't so good to drive, so they're coming out. They're not tracking mud under the streets, they do that, or you have to have. A street sweeper up there or something to get stuff kicked back up on their property there. So. And from the sounds of it, I'll know a little more after maybe not Thursday, you know, have a construction, maybe try to. Just kind of keep everything in order out there since we're gonna have a lot of mud showing up. And I'm sure everybody still sees why it's, so we're down the bridge here, we, we have the. Good stuff. Hopefully they should start finding V bar here, please see that big comment, that they're happy with it, so. Um, with that, state, we has a question about anything.
Will, is there a, is there a big building being built just about two blocks from down from my house? It looked like there was a, like they had erected some steel, big steel called.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, they, they got the permit for that and everything.
Yeah, I saw that thing. I didn't know that they were.
They just built a little garage.
A little garage?
They can build it, they can, they can build a three story home. No, I asked him about that a while ago because it's down, the flood zone down there. That was done before I started here, so I would ask them on it actually, and they had. All the surveying done and had their, let a, a map, a minute down, had the certification for the elevation down there on the. Concrete footing and those floor had everything in place, so.
Cool.
Yeah, it was. It's a long, uh, lengthy process for them.
Yeah, I know the, I think the time of work has been up for quite some time.
Yeah.
Could have started about middle of November, but some of it up.
Yeah, it's been, they've been kind of working on it now. They have what they needed, so.
Okay, thanks, Will.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Eric, council. Uh, worry was a bunch of details, um, with my report, but I can't say. Kind of some little highlight things that I've seen recently. Now having a truck and ability to respond, informing all of that. Um, stuff, we're starting to get some, some more calls for service. That would have gone to the sheriff's office in the past. Recently, I had a call from a local resident. His wife had observed some children trying to break into an abandoned building or look like they're trying to break into an abandoned building. Um, being, you know, one minute away from the other side of town. I was able to jump in the truck, contact the kids, return them home. And the, the parents and I explained how we don't try doors on abandoned buildings just because we want to see what's inside. Uh, they were ten, two ten year olds and a six year old. Kind of put it in perspective. Uh, one of them had a giant rock in his hand. I don't know what the intent of that. He said he likes rocks. But he was looking in a picture window and I pulled up, so could have turned out much worse, um, but the quick response time. And having, having me here was very productive in that way. Um, some other things, just kind of go through, you know, Mr. Brown talked about branches, uh, last year in the past. Came to my attention over the branch that was a safety hazard and over a street, um. I just went and cut it off, so rather than, you know, because that, that was a safety hazard, damage to vehicles and things like that. Uh, got my card here in hand, so I can go to Mr. Brown's, he's gonna direct those things to me. Uh, try to patrol, but yeah, I'd like to welcome any of you in the public to, you know, reach out to me, let me know if there's. There's safety concerns and things like that. I have been watching the bridge, the park that he. Uh, mentioned, it's kind of been covered with snow. We've had, uh, really no break in the weather this winter. The town crews have been down to that park at my direction to work on some other things. Um, so they are there, they are working on things. Unfortunately, they run into some weather flooding. Moisture, uh, the lights aren't working right out, uh, down there. They had some lights that were out when they went to inspect it. They found that there was some water. Uh, infiltrating the electrical panels and stuff, so they shut down that circuit, so we can mitigate all of that. Uh, so we are working on those things, um. Can see, anybody have any? Questions for me? I guess one other thing I want to mention with, uh, thank the sheriff's office. So I actually got invited to crash the sheriff's offices hours training at the elementary school, uh, the elementary school principal. Uh, invited me to that, but, um, you know, I made sure I checked with the, the sheriff's deputy that was putting on that class. And he welcomed me into that class. Then I got to go to the elementary school and attend that, that training was that. Sort of active threat training for the elementary school staff. Uh, very, very productive, so, um, I guess the only other thing, my message, I've seen a lot of. Parking complaints and parking concerns recently in mobile circle, um. You know, put some parking spaces next to the park. And they've been filling up and kind of, you know, some complaints that, hey, these are filled up by vehicles. And they're not getting utilized the way we intended for two hour parking during the day, maybe some overnight. Um, so trying, I'm working to mitigate that, well. With that, does anybody have any questions for me?
I'll share our computer program for the nine one one.
I just got permission from the chief of police. He signed an agreement to give me an actual. Dispatch terminal, so I'll be able to run, um. On vehicle registrations, things like that through my computer system. When I get that, I've got. Uh, connection into the Sheridan Police Department dispatch center. Uh, right now, I, I use that connection in my office. I don't have a computer in my, in my truck. I've been shopping for tablets. Uh, I can tell you that. Anything that's geared towards law enforcement is not cheap. Um, they seem to capitalize on. And all the vulnerability of, of the badge, I guess, is the best way to put it. A tablet and a docking station, those can be, and sure, and you know, talk to this, I mean, this can be thousands of dollars, but. Really, they don't, I mean, just the dock alone, I've seen those in the price range of fifteen hundred dollars, just for a tablet dock. Um, so that can get really expensive. I'm really doing my research to see the best way I can put a tablet and a dock in there. And maybe save us a thousand or two thousand dollars by doing my due diligence and shopping around. Uh, but it is coming and everything on the technical side is, is worked out. Everybody's been very helpful on that.
Um, the question that I have is. Uh, maybe you can't tell me where this person lives, I mean, in what community. But. The person that was caught recently, almost twenty some plus.
They lived in the Sheridan County jail right now. I believe they will be residing there for quite some time. Um.
Did they live in Rochester or?
They did not live in Rochester and they victimized, uh, Johnson County and Sheridan County, so there's cases. Involved, you know, from Johnson County, uh, Dayton, Sheridan, uh, Rochester didn't have any, to my knowledge, there were no. Actual theft cases, but we did have some incidents where alarm, vehicle alarms were going off around the same time in the morning that this person was. You know, operating, so I don't know if. Anything was taken from Rochester, but it very easily could have happened and somebody just doesn't know. Um. They, they did not live in Dayton or Rochester, but they did. And obviously they passed through Rochester, most likely to get to Dayton and operate there, so I would guess they were probably around here as well.
The same suspect that I saw people talking about on Facebook.
Yes. Yes. Uh, I don't know about Big Horn, the, the sheriff could probably talk to this a little bit more, but, um. I know that the suspect was a, a big tick from, that came to identifying, came from social media and some of the. The doorbell cameras and stuff, they were released. There was somebody that recognized that, hey, I believe the video that you have. You know, the person's completely covered up, just, you know, watching the gate of the person, the, the build of the person. Somebody said, I think it's, could be this person, um, and they started looking into that, put the pieces together and everything that very. Very handily, so. I, I guess to speak to your earlier thing, so the emergency management coordinator and I've been in contact, he's supposed to, uh. Be working on certifying his, his new canine today, so he's been busy with that the last couple of weeks. But we are talking about hazard mitigation plans and things, there's things in the works, but I'm also. Um, indirect contact with him to work out some finer details. So the county will have a big plan, but we want to have a more specific, more robust. Plan that talks about exactly what you're talking about. Um, you know, I've talked to staff here. About, you know, identifying some of our residents that are less, you know, that have mobility needs or whatever, so if we do have an evacuation. Or if it comes to whatever hazard it is, whether it's flooding or whatever, we have a list of those people that are identified, so that nobody gets. You know, left behind or forgotten, that we know, okay, these are the people that we need to, to give resources to, to get them. To higher ground or better, better areas, so working on all that to just kind of button up some loose ends on all of that.
Other questions?
Thank you much.
Special committee reports, um.
So this week on the planning commission, last night they had a meeting and the clash had, um, engineering, the bird that is. Air between the two of you, so we, um, they whenever that, that's something they would like for the council to review, like that, as we go into the budget session. And with all the things going on, that was a, one of the things with someone survey that came up. This one of the most popular thing that people are looking for to have something to be in the ranch house here. Um, in the summertime, so that was a engineering firm that went out with us and kind of drew that up and they just asked what you guys lived at that for the budget. Um, another thing they want to do is like on their next, um, one of their next couple of meetings, they plan to go on a walkabout and then just kind of walk around town. And determine which sidewalks should be put in first, you know, kind of prioritize sidewalks and where they need to be. But they find that shake it out and walk around and do that. So that's coming soon, soon as we do.
Soon as you can see it.
Great, and then, um, they also would like to do a, um, like. That was in the days that they were looking forward to. Working on, we can organize that all the way and we'd support that.
Hey Barbara, I, I wonder if when they're doing the walk around and they could identify. Uh, maybe trees on property that might need to trim that, we could get a hold of the. Property owners and have them do some work on their own trees.
That's kind of, actually, that's kind of beyond the scope of what we do.
Well, they can't identify.
They, they can, but I mean, that'd be, that's what. We'll work on that, we'll wait.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's. That. It's a good idea, but anyway, yeah, you know, so I think that's, we want to concentrate on just the. This is the stuff that they're doing this part of planning, um, infrastructure and.
We did discuss, um, maybe adding something to their name because they're kind of more than the funding commission. They really are only committing. That's outside of the council and outside of the town staff, that's like looking at things, so. Whether it's, you know, like it's Bosh has and they're doing surveys and conducting different things, so I don't know, maybe they're. Maybe broadened like what their. Scopes apart is what they do for the town. Because they're not always doing planning commission, but they will at some point be very employed with the planning commission as things change with subdivisions. Coming in and looking at lots, but. So that's just kind of a thought. That we don't have a good mom and dad or committee and they kind of do all of that.
Thanks, Barbara. Uh, the next, uh, joint party is, uh, term of our joint party is April fourth. Uh, April twentieth at sixteen, April twenty sixth here in Rochester. Um, fire district.
Back in service.
Hope you don't have to. Approval of treasures report.
The significance changed, no transfers this time. Everything is where it is.
I would move to approve the treasurer report as presented. Second. Would you have seen the ready to approve treasures report? In the comments, we're coming. On there? There is. Um, bills. You see, we got the, first, a lot of small print bills, credit card bills.
It's the CTA technology that our.
It's, um, a lot of things, there's grant stuff in there. There's a lot of different things. They've rewired the building for the cybersecurity grant. They've. Been. Yeah. But a lot of that's covered under the different grants that we have.
And I didn't, when I reviewed it, I didn't see anything was. Really excited, just a normal. Yeah, in its operations.
Would move to approve bills in the amount of one hundred fifty seven thousand ninety eight cents.
Anyone discussion? More discussion, all favor? Payroll. Like the approved payment apparel of fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and forty one cents. By Randy, seven, by Jessica, payroll, anyone discussion, any discussion, all favor? I. Um, any other future agenda items? German. I'll make most of the room.